Good evening, let's have a little cheer for those who are prayerless.
Good.
Good morning.
Heavenly Father, from the early rise of the sun to the setting day, we thank you for being with us. It's even we invoke your presence, we lift high your name. For those who are jobless, it's even Lord, we ask that you bring them a job. For those Lord who are homeless, we ask that you bring them a home. For those Lord who are sick, we ask that you heal their bodies. And for the groups that are represented here tonight, the robotics team and the North Central volleyball team. Lord, we ask you to continue, Lord, to take their minds, Lord, and may be used, Lord, for your goodness and for your mercy. And we appreciate all those who support our children here in Kershaw County. For those, it's even Lord, who may be still on a bed of affliction. For those Lord who may be still suffering with COVID. For those who have diarrhea, we ask that you put your wall of protection around all of us. And for those who may be coming to the meet this evening, Lord, we ask that you grant them traveling mercies. And that they may find all this well when they get here. And we will be so careful to give you all the honor and glory that is through you. And it's in your name we pray. And it's in your name we count it all done. Amen.
Call Kershaw County through what it trusses me into water. Is there a motion to adopt? Properly motioned by Coach Black, second by Mrs. Sherry, all of us in favor, that we know by send I. Those are the phones and it's unanimous. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda approved in this from March 15, board? And much more than my experience in the social community. The proper motion by Mr. Aron, is it second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Taylor, all of us in favor, that we know by send I. Those are the phones and that's unanimous. Well, thank you to everyone for coming out this evening for community and those that are watching. It is good to be here. At this time, we want to acknowledge the wet seal, wet seal would be promptly independent. As well as center guests that have just also arrived. Thank you for being here with us. It's a great day in Kershaw County. At this time, we want to celebrate and recognize some of the great things that's happened throughout Kershaw County with our academic sports department.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Smith, members of the board. It's always a great opportunity when we can recognize our students and the wonderful things they're doing in the community, in the district, and representing Kershaw County. The first group that I want to recognize, we are a little late in recognizing them, but in the fall, the North Central High School volleyball team. And even before I get to what they did in the fall, so in my four years here in Kershaw County, the first two years, I believe, they were in the upper state. Correct me if I'm wrong, Coach Johnson, and they were upper state runners-up. Did not get to that point in the third year, and then the fourth year, they became lower state champions. And represented Kershaw County with dignity and class, and were the class to a state runner-up for the state of South Carolina. And we wanted to recognize them and Coach Johnson tonight. And so, Coach, I'm happy to turn it over to you to say a few things about your kids, your program. I know my four years here, you guys have represented North Central High School with the people of Kershaw County very well, and we're very proud of you. So ladies, thanks for being here tonight.
I thought he said he was going to say something, but he might be.
First of all, I'd like to thank our community support at North Central High School. Unbelievable the amount of support that we have as far as our events. And it's just a testament of what the hard work that these young ladies put into at the time, the effort. And so, we've been very fortunate over the last six or eight years to have very successful teams. So I'm extremely blessed with the student athletes, the community support, the parental support as far as being dedicated and committed. I do also want to thank, you know, Mr. Brannan, our principal, very supportive, Coach Drakeford, our school board, Coach Blattman, thanks for, I think I saw you in the stands. I appreciate that. And also the school board for getting these young ladies back into our gymnasium at North Central High School. And I know it took a lot of work, Mr. Billy Smith, I mean, I don't want to leave anybody out, but it was a huge deal for us to get back on that campus about two years ago. And they didn't skip a beat. We still had a lot of obstacles that we have to deal with, even to this day, as far as our situation. But these young ladies have persevered, so I really appreciate that. So thank you, Dr. Roberts. Coach, we've been asked that you introduce your players and your assistant coaches. Again, we have 13 on the slide, but some could not be here from fire commitments that they made here. But I'd like to thank first of all, my assistant coach, Mr. Colganey, that's a great guy for us, been here for many years. Grayson Beckham, which is a senior, Emma Sims, which is a senior, Allison Hayes, which is a junior, Lani Garbey, which is a junior, and Mary Norwood, which is a freshman, and our athletic director, Coach Tomon-Grofen.
So the next group that we have the opportunity to recognize, and this is going to be a little bit of an interactive recognition, but it's our KC robotics team. And for those of you who don't know, they won the state championship and qualified for the world championship. I believe that's in Houston, Texas, if I'm not mistaken. And so, we are excited to have them here. I guess what I would like to do is, before we get started this time, let's go ahead and introduce the members of the team. And then you guys can walk us through your demonstration, and then we'll do a photo op with you all as well, okay? So I just want to say thank you. We are so proud of you. I remember hearing about this, your robotics team, my very first year here, you know, reading a little bit of the history and the humble beginnings, and to the level of which you have now accomplished is something to be very proud of. And just know that we're all very proud of you as well. So thanks again for being here tonight. So somebody told me there was an organizer to this group, so, and I believe it's a student. Yeah, so come on up.
I'm Jenna. I'm a member of the Sea Dogs, which is one of the teams that's part of the KC robotics team. Do you want me to say people's names? This is Celeste. She's one of our programmers. Craig's also one of our programmers. That's Josh and Weston. Parker and Gabe are on the other team, the highlighters.
So we have a slide deck that was shared with us. Do you want to walk us through your slide deck?
Yes, we have, we have multiple people who have different parts to present.
So I think Celeste is up first.
We're actually, like, we have a long group right there, so we have multiple slides that each of us has, so we can just come up and do that.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll follow your lead.
Just make sure you use the microphone, because the people at home can hear you.
So our program was started in the years 2004, 2005, school year, by Holly Sullivan, who was a chemistry and physics teacher at Lethal College High School. She's actually back there, my mother. We participate in the first robotics challenge. It first stands for inspiration and recognition of science and technology. Up there is, well, before that was a picture of our first, the first robot that our team ever created.
The first program was started by Dean Kamen in 1992. The program has been expanded to have programs for students age four to 18. And Dean Kamen is in And Dean Kamen is in the blue shirt in the picture on the page. This page shows the logos for the different FIRST programs we participate in. So there's the Lego League, all that type of stuff, and they're offered for different ages, different age groups, some of that.
Our program is open to seventh through 12th graders all over Kershaw County. We have students from schools all over the district, plus Camden Military, private schools, and homeschool.
We work hard, but we have a lot of fun, too. So these are some pictures from our local competitions and from our sim lab that we do all of our practices on.
Our team has been significantly supported in the recent years by these groups. Kershaw County School District has provided team support and guidance for team activities. Little Potager High School has provided a detailed room for the teams to meet. Invista has provided a team of $5,000 each year for five years, literally enabling the team to have the funds needed for regular season. Thank you to these significant supporters to our team. Also want to say thank you to our team mentors. Without them, we wouldn't know how to do anything. Henry Bull, Lily Foster, Beth Jeffers, Bill Jeffers, Corey Martinez, Jennifer Skinkle Martinez, Sheriff Scott, Terry Shepherd, and Paul Sullivan. Without them, none of this would be here.
We have two FIRST Tech Challenge teams, Team 208, the Highlighters, and Team 17621, the Sea Dogs. And these are pictures of our final robots that we had this year.
FTC, the FTC game for this year is a 2-on-2 robot competition that is placed in 12-foot-by-12-foot field, well, foot-playing field. This year's game is called Freight Frenzy and is presented by Raytheon Technologies. The picture shows the balls, blocks, and ducks that are used as the field elements. The circular goals are the shipping pumps for the field elements are scored. Hard to see are the carousels in the far corner where the ducks are scored at the end of each match. You can see the spinners on both of our robots, it's tires that we use to do those.
Teams get points based on where field elements are scored. The first 30 seconds of each match is an autonomous period where the robot operates on a pre-programmed instructions. No driver control is permitted during this time. Our teams did really well this season. Team 208 won the Winning Alliance captain during the qualifier, not the qualifier, the pre-scurmage. Collins Aerospace Innovative Award during the tournament as well. And then during the state championship, we won the Motivate Award winner. And then we were ranked fifth out of the 28 teams.
Team 17621 also won a lot of awards during our tournament and our state competition. We ended up being the finalist alliance captain and placed first at the state competition.
Jenna Henry here, a member of the Sea Dogs, is one of the two South Carolina recipients of the Dean's List Award and will represent South Carolina as the Dean's List finalist at the FIRST World Championship, which we will be going to in two weeks' time.
Because our team, the Sea Dogs, was the captain of the Winning Alliance at the South Carolina Championships, they received an invite, invitation to the FIRST Tech Challenge World Championships in Houston, Texas, the week of April 18. During this week, 160 teams from around the world will come and compete in the FIRST Tech Challenge event. Both of our teams will be able to attend the event, the high-level supporting Sea Dogs during the event. Just in a few weeks, the teams have been able to raise over $30,000 by sponsorships and donations. Here's just some of our information for how, if you want to support us, because we need money.
For more information about our team, you can check out our team website, kceroboticsteam.org.
Now it is time for a brief demonstration. If our members will come up. Sorry, 12 years in back, it's kind of a one of the other situation. We thank you for our time today as we finish out this group demonstration. And this is one of our team pictures for our state championship.
So before you all take off, first of all, thank you so much for bringing all your equipment here to demonstrate tonight. Thank you for all your hard work. This is a really exciting time, you know, for you all and for us as well. But I also know that there are some people here that want to get a photo op with you. But there's also a senator from Kershaw County who is here, and she's got a resolution she would like to read and present to your team. So Senator Gusserson, if you want to come up.
I think I'll stand here. I'll stand here so everyone can see and hear me. Congratulations. When I heard about what your team was doing, I mean, I've never done anything like this in my life. It's really cool, and I'm so glad you're getting recognition for all the hard work you've done. So consistent with that, I have filed a resolution, a Senate resolution. Bear with me, bear with me as I read this. It is long, okay? It's Senate resolution to congratulate the Kershaw County Robotics Team and team officials on outstanding season. Honor them for winning the South Carolina 2022 State Championship and congratulate them for qualifying to compete in the World Championship. Whereas, y'all, y'all heard these before, right? Okay. Whereas the South Carolina Senate is proud to recognize the Kershaw County Robotics Team for winning the South Carolina State Championship on February 28, 2022. And whereas the Kershaw County Robotics Team won the South Carolina Championship against 2018's, 2018's showing their hard work and determination. And whereas, following their state championship win, the team will be competing in the World Championship, which is a 14-day event held in Houston during the month of April. And whereas the members of the South Carolina Senate appreciate the pride and recognition that the Kershaw County Robotics Team has brought to its community and look forward to a future filled with further accomplishments by the team and its very talented members. And I'll just add this, and the mentors, and the teachers, and all the people who support you, that's not in the resolution, I want to add that. Be it resolved by the Senate. Be resolved by the Senate. My arm is giving out, yes, thank you. Can you see? Be resolved by the Senate that the members of the South Carolina Senate, by this resolution, congratulate officially the Kershaw County Robotics Team and team officials on outstanding season. Honor them for winning the South Carolina 2022 State Championship and congratulate them for qualifying to compete in the World Championship. Be it further resolved, if copied this resolution, be presented to the Kershaw County Robotics Team and its team officials. Thank you. It's now down and forever in history. Congratulate.
We're going to do it right here in front of the table so we can get the robots in the picture. And we line up that way, and then we'll still be able to get the logo in the background.
Are we turned this way? No. We're taking pictures.
Anybody like to take pictures?
He's got it.
Part of the competition, I have to put everything up. That's a good job. Thank you so much.
Oh, next is in the item is, oh, no one's signing it forward. Thank Dr. Smith, again, members of the board. I received a card in the mail after our last meeting that I wanted to read publicly tonight. I thought it was, you know, it was just very heartwarming. But it's from Mrs. Estridge, and she says, Dear Dr. Robbins and county school board members, I appreciate your help in making my heart day very special. The flowers were beautiful, and the Bethune school painting is a keepsake. Thank you for remembering me in such a nice way. It was also nice to meet you. I wish you the best. I wish the best for you. Sincerely, Iris Estridge. So that was very sweet of her, and I'm glad we had the opportunity to do that, so we'll shut up, y'all, tonight. All right, I'll turn it over to our CFO.
Good evening, here is Dr. Robbins and members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to walk through our draft proposed budget for 2023. This is based on the House version of the budget, so again, the Senate K-12 Committee discussed the budget today. So obviously, we are following that closely and anticipating some changes. So the next version of the draft that you see next month will likely reflect whatever changes come through the Senate. But the version tonight is based on what we know so far, which is the House version of the budget. So Slide 2 walks through summary, a summary of the changes that are included in this budget. The first one is the mandated step increase. So that proviso, we're mandated to give a step increase to our teachers. We are also going to give a step increase to our staff. So this budget includes a step increase for all of our workers. It also includes a 2% increase on top of their step increase, and that is also for teachers and all other staff members. This budget also includes an increase to our teacher salary schedule to bring us up to the minimum salary schedule. So if you remember, our steps 0 through 3 are going to be below the House version of the minimum salary schedule for teachers. So this budget includes that increase to bring us up to the minimum. And then on top of that would be the 2% increase, so it'll be a little bit higher than the state minimum. It also includes the bus driver increase, which is mandated through the House Legislature. It includes an increase to our substitute per diem, but we are also assuming a decrease in the number of, in the volume of substitutes that we'll need for next school year, just based on where the COVID numbers are. It includes the 1% increase in the employer pension fund match and an 18.1% increase in the employer portion of health insurance. It keeps our FTEs flat from the 2021, 2022 school year, except there is a shift of FTEs from our act response to our general fund, and that's just based on the new funding model. And the new model, because it's simplified, we will not have our act response separate. They will be included in our general fund, so we will shift those FTEs into the general fund. And then again, the revenue that we discussed is based on our House version of the budget. On Slide 3, you'll see our revenue as we are projecting. So the first column is the actual revenue that we received in 2020, 2021. The second column is the budget that you all approved for 21, 22. The third column is our projection for 21, 22, so based on what we know through March. And then the last column shows our proposed budget for 22, 23. So really, the two places that you'll see an increase is our EFA line. This is the $3.8 million, which is our new dollars that we are expecting to see based on the House version of the budget. That includes funding for the retirement, for the health insurance premium increase, as well as the step increases for teachers and bringing up to the minimum salary schedule. And then you'll also see, based on the projection we've received from the state, an increase in our Act 3823 money. So overall, we're estimating about a $4.578 million increase to our state funding, which gets our proposed budget for 22, 23 to $102,164,305. And then our expenditures equal that same amount. On the next line, we line out the proposed increases and expenditures. You'll notice that most of our increases are at the top, which is where our salaries and our fringe and our benefits are. So each line where you see an increase, that is the cost of a 2% increase and a step increase. So that's what those numbers are reflective of. And then the retirement and the insurance reflect those percentage increases that we are estimating. The FICA increase is just reflective of our increase in salaries, so the increase in FICA will be based on that. As we move down, you'll see we did reduce our travel budget enough to be able to build in the 2% increase for our staff. And then we did also build in a $275,000 line item to try to maintain that 17% reserve target that you all have set for the district. And so that gets to our expenditures of just over $102 million, which would be our balance budget for next year. And again, the majority of our increases is just based on that step increase, that 2% increase in the retirement and the employer portion of insurance. So that's sort of that's majority of the revenue for next year. Are there any questions about the proposed budget?
Henry, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
We've already discussed some of that. I'd like to elaborate a little bit. When the asset funds, you know, what will we be doing to, we'll lose that money, so we've got employees to use that money. So give us your explanation of how you think that will take place when that, when that fund completes or goes down. What do you think the plan is?
Right. So we have our ESSAR funding until September of 2024. So we have a couple more years under ESSAR. There are some employees that are coded to ESSAR that we have made an assumption likely those programs would go away, that they were, those positions were hired due to COVID or those programs were created as a result of COVID. And those would go away. Again, the majority of our ESSAR money is not on salaries, though. It was for things like the renovation of the annexes for, for one-time costs. But for the places where it's for people, the assumption was that either through attrition, they would shift from ESSAR to the general fund if you all chose that those were positions that we needed to keep. Otherwise, those folks are aware that they are ESSAR funded and that that position may go away if there isn't another revenue source when we get to that point.
Thank you. I just want to ask you a question.
It's our time to present to you a strategic renewal plan update for this year. Wanted to be sure that we went through the process. Every year, the state requires that every school district and school completes a strategic renewal plan. We are currently in the third year of that cycle. So the plan that we're going over was actually developed three years ago. This district defined, defines the goals and schools will align their goals to our district goals. And then we monitor that for the next five years. I will say that the State Department is trying to develop a universal plan to consolidate all the plans that we have to do into one plan. So the strategic renewal plan, the reading plan, proficiency plan, the academic recovery plan, the literacy plan, the Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV plan, all basically asking for a lot of the same information. So if we could consolidate that into one plan, that would be a wonderful thing. They also are developing a comprehensive monitoring tool as well, hopefully to streamline the process by which they monitor how we spend the money that they are so generous to give us. I will also remind you that the goals that we set five years ago, it said we increased by 10%. We take, and we divide that by five to make that a yearly goal. So that would be 2% per year, or if it's a 1.0 increase, that would be a 0.2 increase over five years. So pop quiz, you've seen this answer before. What is this number? Okay, that's our graduation rate in Kershaw County at 86.3. This became a topic the other night, and I would say that each school and school district has some unique characteristics, which define our population, our student population. Some districts are large, some are small, some have larger poverty indexes than others. So when you compare school districts, it's best to compare it to similar districts as compared to districts who may be more affluent than us or less affluent than us. So school, school districts that don't have any Title I schools or all Title I schools. So those all affect your graduation rate. But if you remember back in September, when we went over this, we looked at regionally how we get in our graduation rate, and we were better than Richland two, Richland one, Lancaster, Leighton two, and below Leighton five by 1.5%. And when you looked at apples to apples, when we look at similar poverty indexes across the board, we led Anderson five, O'Conne, Greenville, Berkeley, Ori, and York three. So we compare very well when we compare our graduation rate, both regionally and to school districts like ours. When you look at our graduation rate over time, you can see how we compare to the state, and we compare very favorably to the state. We exceed the state in every year except for 2017, which really wasn't part of, of this strategic plan. I would like to say kudos to Waylon Burns and our Adult Ed Department. Not included in this number are any students that received a GED or any fifth-year graduates. Anybody like that was taken out of the graduation cohort. So really, when you look at the number of students that we graduated or got a diploma or a GED, it's higher than this number. So kudos to, to Waylon and and his department. And you may have seen last week, they have a program in Kershaw County Jail, and they had eight kids who wouldn't have had a diploma any other way. Got their GED that way. And that's, that's remarkable. So great job by him and his team. Also, if you look at this, if you disaggregate it a little bit and you look at how our African-American students perform, our African-American students graduated 87%. The state's graduation rate is 81% for their African-American students. Our African-American students are graduating at a higher rate in the state as well. So again, great job by our teachers. Next slide.
Do you have a breakdown of three high schools?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I can get that to you. I can. I'll be happy to. They're all very similar. But yes, I can get that point. You actually have the strategic plan in your board packet, but I went ahead and pulled the current goals out so you didn't have to keep So the current goals in our strategic plan, the first being the number of kindergarten students demonstrating readiness will increase to 52% as measured by the South Carolina KRA assessment. Second, the percentage of students in kindergarten through second grade who are reading and performing math on grade level, as indicated by our map scores, will increase by 25%. So over five years, that's 5% per year. The percentage of gifted students scoring exemplary grades four through six, four and six, excuse me, on SE pass will increase by 10%. The percentage of African-American students who do not meet expectations on SC Ready will be reduced by 10%. The math performance in grades three through eight on SC Ready will increase by 10%. Student performance on Algebra I EOCs will increase by 10%. District administration will improve, as indicated, by 0.2% in each area. There's a survey we'll talk about in a little bit, and there are four goals identified. The recognition of employees, support by our district administration for administration, for innovation, modeling teamwork, and basing decisions on our district state goals. Elliot Ratings, Elliot is the tool we use for walkthrough observations, will improve by 1.0 in the areas of digital technology. That's on a four-point scale. The number of middle and high school students referred to the Continuous Learning Center will reduce by 10%, and teacher retention will remain at 90%. I'd like to remind you that we do meet with our principals regularly to go through data. The principals report back to, and they drill down to the school, the teacher, and the kid to talk about their data. We've met with them three times in the fall, in the first semester, and twice so far in this semester. They are well versed at the, what issues exist at their school and how they're addressing. So I pass the torch.
So I'm super excited to talk about our little learners, our kindergartners. So our kindergarten readiness assessment was started, and we started assessing kindergarten readiness assessment back in 2014, 2015 school year. State law required that all students entering pre-K kindergarten had to be administered a readiness assessment during the first 45 days of the school year. In pre-K, we administer the PALS assessment, and kindergarten, we administer kindergarten readiness assessment, which is a Johns Hopkins assessment. It provides a snapshot of students' abilities at the beginning of a kindergarten school year, and it assesses students in four domains: social foundations, language and literacy, mathematics, and physical well-being. When I looked at the chart over the last several years, obviously, the 2020 school year is alarming. However, that year, we gave a modified version of the KRA by the state. The state only asked us to administer fewer items to that, that year, and, and so the teachers and students were, could follow appropriate social distancing practices and protocols. So we did not administer the social foundations and the physical well-being assessment that year. We only did language and literacy and mathematics. Additionally, statewide, that year, we sent 16% of our students who demonstrated readiness that year. The state had 26% of the students demonstrate readiness. Now, when you look at this year's assessment, we administered the entire assessment, and we're back at 33.2% of our kindergartners are ready for kindergarten. And I look at this data and I go over it with our kindergarten teachers, and we talk about lows and grows when we look at data. So a glow that I wanted to share tonight is that obviously, we made a grade improvement from 2020 to 2021 by increasing the 17%. The grow that I'm super excited about, working with our kindergarten teachers and our 4K teachers this year, is that we are going to have a countdown to kindergarten program in our elementary schools this summer, as well as a countdown to kindergarten back-to-school bash pending our grant funding that we've applied for. We also have our cert at summer camp that we have our 4K students who are in 4K now, who rise to kindergarten for next year, they'll be in that camp. And we also offer a kindergarten summer camp. One of the things that the state has made a recommendation for, for next year, is to create a uniform system for data collection and reporting, as well as provide access to the assessments that are given to 4K students to the 5K teachers. So they can also see those, both of those assessments and compare data. The next slide is following quite along with looking from the kindergarten piece to the first and second grade. We looked at the reading and math percentages of students meeting expectations. And if you looked at it, we've maintained where we are over the past several years with our cohorts. If you specifically look at second grade, you know, that is the one grade where we have seen some slight decline. But when we sat and talked about this data with our principals, that is the cohort of students that were in kindergarten when we went out for our code disclosure 18 months ago. So we know that we're working very hard and very diligently with our reading coaches and our teachers to work with that cohort of students. Again, a glow is that we have created curriculum guides district-wide for our students in pre-K through fifth grade to really work on improving correlated and consistent instruction across the district. We also have differentiated core plans for our students in all of our schools our NTSS coaches work with. And we do have tutoring, and we have the kindergarten through second grade camp. And grow is an area that we want to work on. Is this summer, we're going to continue to strengthen and refine those district-wide tier-one instructional plans that we have with our curriculum guides. And I'm super excited about our July 11th summit that we're having this summer to finally bring back our greater life and subject of life planning across the district. So our teachers can get together in grade-level bands to work.
Excuse me, can I ask a question, please? Going back to the kindergarten, then it is emerging, approaching, and ready. I know what ready is, but what's the difference in emerging and approaching when it comes to be able to meet the requirements for that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Emerging is minimal skills and approaching is some skills.
The next slide. Oh, yep, that's the yellow light. So you get to talk about that.
Will you skip over your math slide?
Nope, it is.
Here I am, okay. So ELA, obviously, that is my favorite subject. But you can see over the past several years, we're specifically looking at 2019 and 2021. You see, we've maintained where we were, as well as made some great gains in some grade levels. In, in, back in 2013, 2014, makes the fun Act 284, we, the state put in some mandates for instructional time in classes. So we have 120 minutes, so it's supposed to be designated to ELA instruction, 90 minutes for core instruction, and 30 minutes for interventions. So as you look at this data, one of the things I want to talk about is specifically looking at grades three through eight. We have now, all of our elementary and middle schools are Title I schools. We have school and district-wide reading plans that we work to address this data annually, as well as we have readiness and assessments in pre-K through three with the DIBELS assessment, and then we'll look at back data as we go on to the higher grades. So a grow and a glow, again, for me, a glow is that, once again, those curriculum guides are a place to help maintain and strengthen that discussion across the district as we articulate and work together. And the grow is just to continue to strengthen those tier-one plans, to have this summit, this summit with our teachers, to be able to allow them the time to work together and plan together. And then one of the things that we want to work at is specifically looking at fifth and sixth grades. We have talked today again about making sure that we plan an intentional and purposeful bridge program with the teachers between the fifth and the sixth grade, so that we work on that curriculum guide and see if there's any kind of skill gaps that are missing between the fifth and the sixth grade bridge.
What would the bridge look like? Do you have any rest understanding? What would the bridge look like, between the fifth and the sixth grade?
Well, what we would do is basically provide support for the teachers, allow them to come together across the district, like during that summit time that we have, for them to plan and for them to talk about. If a sixth-grade teacher has a student in a classroom, that he or she might say that, you know, I see that they may have issues or struggling with writing paragraphs or reading comprehension skills. And so we would work at the fifth grade to make sure that we listen to that, that basically gap skills analysis to figure out what areas that we need to really beef up in our fifth-grade curriculum to help them make that bridge from fifth to sixth grade.
There's also fifth grade to sixth grade transition camps at each of our middle schools. So each of them has defined a time in June, whether the school gets out, that they're bringing people in, providing bus transportation in some instances, food to bring them in for a day, or, excuse me, for several days a week. Most, most schools are two weeks at a time to address those needs. Here's my math slide that I wasn't real happy about. She's saying it's not math, she's saying, so we, we covered the gimmick. We've talked about this before. This mimics the state data. What you see when we met in, excuse me, in September and talked about this, what we saw statewide mimics our data. All that being said, that's no excuse. We got to be better. We see a decline from third grade to eighth grade. In the past, since '04, we spent a lot of time addressing English, a lot of time, a lot of money, doubled the time in class to address English issues. And again, as an old math guy, I have to admit, if they can't read it, they can't do it. They can't do the math if they can't read the problem. So first issue is not, is, is the reading. We have to correct the reading, and then we can move on to the other subjects. Same would be true in science or social study. Reading is that fundamental skill that opens or closes the door on me. But we've begun to address the math by increasing the amount of time in the classroom for students. They're getting double-blocked math time. And in addition to the double-blocked English time, we've streamlined our resources to address the tier-one, the primary focus of our instruction. For a while, we had people doing all kinds of things. There needed to be a clear message, a clear unified language that we use. We can't call the denominator, the fraction, the thing at the bottom. We can't do that. We have to call it by what it is. We have to use the right language. We have to address things in the same way. We're work, working on that. We continue to work on that. That has been part of our tutoring protocol. Half the time was ELA, half the time was math. We have math interventionists in all of our elementary and middle schools. We have our NTSS coaches work on that as well. Our reading coaches are not just reading coaches. They also work to help guide that math curriculum as well. So we should see some increases. I will say that when I look back at 2017, the, the numbers are pretty much the same. The number in third grade net percentages was 53, in fourth grade, 41, fifth grade, 41, sixth, 34, seventh, 31, and eighth, 30. So the numbers have not moved, and that's disappointing. So we will do a better job of addressing that.
What would be the plan to be more aggressive? Because we spent five years and everything is still
Absolutely. Absolutely. Number one is to get everybody in. When we talked about the summit, we haven't had a time when we could get everybody Number one is to get everybody in, when we talked about the summit, we haven't had a time when we could get everybody together and discuss this in great bands. Here's what we need, when we do our differentiating core plans and we look at the standards that kids are struggling with. Almost across the board is especially in middle school, it's a data analysis and probability. What is the one thing they missed? Two years ago, when we went out on quarantine, data analysis and probability. So we're still catching up from what happened two years ago, there's still a skill gap that never got taught. So we've got to address that within, so yes, it is very definitely get aggressive with, with the teachers. And we, when we meet on July the eleventh and we adjust the pacing guys, we tweak them every year. The problem that's been two years ago when we did that, that was at the end of that first quarantine period. We have about three teachers per grade. That's not enough, that's, that, that, that won't do what we needed to do, we need everybody at the table. So we're encouraging people, Dr. Robbins has offered us a way to incentivize people to come. We have a pretty aggressive schedule, July eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth, those four days to have a. Conference here in Kershaw County to have something for everybody to come to the table and learn from. And we'll bring our textbook people in to help lead that training. They need, they need to know how to use the resources best. Clearly, at this point, whatever it is they think they're doing, hasn't worked to this point. So part of the issue is recognizing that it hasn't worked to this point and how to address it before. That's using our resources. You have a question about? Alright, next is, you'll remember, one of the goals was to reduce the number of African-American students who were scoring not meeting expectations on S E Ready. It's to reduce that by ten percent, which will be two percent per year. So you can see here that in twenty twenty-one, in ELA, African-Americans, thirty-seven point six seven percent scored not meets expectations. In math, it was fifty-one point six seven percent, still too much. But when I looked at it historically and I look back to twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the African-American students who did not meet expectations on ELA was seventy-seven point four four percent. So three out of four did not meet expectations. Now, around about one in three, that's a difference of thirty-four point seven seven percent. That's a remarkable increase by our teachers. In math, in eighteen, nineteen, it's fifty-seven point seven seven percent, now it's fifty-one point six seven percent. An improvement, not as much as English, but it is an improvement nonetheless and within the bounds of what for our goal. We continue to focus on that and we looked at our tutoring protocol. Forty-two percent of the students involved in our student protocol were African-American students. So we, we're targeting our, our, our subgroups to be sure that we're addressing those issues as the same way as we can.
So when I look at this year. And as I said, presented before us. Where's the, the white breakdown for? Yes, for, for residents, we have Asians, like Hispanic and more than one Pacific out, but not Caucasian.
I'll add that for. I'll add it in the slide deck and you'll have it before the night.
As Mr. Matthews told you, I, I'm science and I'll also be covering our high school goals. As you see on the slide, it says grade four and grade six, science scores, met expectations on stock, throw on the pass. We see in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we had a substantial increase in grade four. A little bit of decrease in sixth grade. And then two thousand twenty came on, two thousand twenty, the test was not even given across the state. And as you know, the test is not going to be given and we're also focusing a lot on the ELA and those math standards. That structural time decrease. You also put that in the focus with two years of interrupting instruction. I think what you see in two thousand twenty-one is that lagging structural time and deficiency of meeting those standards. So there is a substantial decrease in two thousand twenty-one. When I analyze that data though, and I look at schools like ours, also with poverty, local school districts, you see that drop across the board. So it wasn't just our district. One good, good thing to say about our science, I'm looking forward to it, you probably presented to you not too long ago about new standards. And they're rolling them out very slow, we're still two years away from them being assessed. But our state is adopting the textbooks and also adopting new science supplies. And I've already been able to view those and they're pretty amazing. It's going to allow our elementary and middle school teachers to truly teach science the way science should be taught, hands-on. Even if that, and that's not what they want the school to do is teach science, just specifically. I think it's going to make the job a lot easier, more important, I think it's going to make it fun for our students. Next slide, one of our high school goals, algebra one and of course test percent passing. As you can see, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, we're doing fairly well. And again, in two thousand twenty, there's a, a, a significant drop. I hate to say it, I, I will say that's probably COVID-related, but you see the, our sequential data from elementary to middle. This is a weakness that we definitely need to look at and get some focus on. So those ninth graders, so that's the ninth grade course, of course, and pre-algebra, if you think about that, those are seventh graders that were pre-algebra when we first had COVID. So if you don't learn the basics, it's kind of hard to go into algebra, break equations at the ninth grade. So I think we have a lot of kids that struggle and that's where we had that decrease.
So when I look at this right here. And the previous slides, it takes us up to year twenty twenty-one, we don't have that data for twenty twenty-one.
No, we won't have that yet.
I'm just wondering, you know, we have to get them missing for everything, yes, going back to twenty twenty-one, why is it missing in the now? This one is two, this is two thousand twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, we don't have twenty twenty because it wasn't given, so that's mislabeled.
On the science slide, that's correct. Okay.
So there, there was no state assessment in twenty twenty. Because of COVID, we just did not give state assessments, so that's mislabeled, that should be twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
The next slide is our work-based learning opportunities, very proud of what our schools did in this area. During COVID, you can see on all four years, we've held that steady and also try to question increase there quite a bit. This was really just hard work of our work, work-based counselors, our coordinators and the staff at those schools really pushing those, even in face of COVID. Those partnerships with industry and getting those kids, those opportunities are very, very beneficial and are reported on our school report card. And also this coming year, we'll have our high school credential program and some graduates with our special needs population that'll also be added at this moment. Next slide is college career ready graduates. These numbers, as you can see, we exceed the state in every single year from two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one. Student pays readiness by either having an ACT or SAT score that would enroll them in a post-secondary setting. ASVAB score that will allow them to join the military, receive work-based credits, as I mentioned earlier. Complete one-one K, complete completion programs at their home school or WTC. Or complete dual enrollment courses. And we have a very high percent of students, as you probably already know, taking dual enrollment courses. When I look at the other districts, we almost double the number of students that are in dual enrollment. So we're doing a really good job there and we want to increase that. There was a slight decrease, but again, that probably was contributed kids getting out and being able to do some of those work-based opportunities due to COVID. But I believe the schools are doing a really good job with it.
One of the last few goals, we're on the last end of these goals are, one was teacher retention. The goal was to maintain a ninety percent teacher retention rate. You can see that other than the very first year of the process. In twenty nineteen, we have done exactly that, so props to our HR department and the principals. And the, the district, so in spite of all the negative that you hear, we still have a lot of people who want to be. Grass isn't always greener across the county line, across the state line. We think we have a pretty good program right here in Kershaw County, but, and we hope that that maintains contracts do go out in the next couple of weeks. So we hope that people will sign their contracts and come on back. The next slide is the Elliott observation slide, again.
So, so I just have a question. We're retaining teachers and we've spent time over the last couple of years of gathering data. And then we are plateauing, I'm still trying to figure out what's the connection, what are we missing that we are not increasing? When we are on the same level for, for years now and we are focused the last three years about gathering the data. So if we gather the data, what are we doing with it, are we able to incorporate it in such a way that teachers can apply it in classroom?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, every.
So there should be an increase of something that.
You're, you're right.
There would be a difference, because what we're seeing here is that it's not something, because it's a disconnect, because I don't see the growth taking place. I'm just raising a question so that we can think, how do we move forward? To, even if we retain teachers, somewhere or another, the pandemic started to increase.
Absolutely.
And we are not, over five years, based on what you've shared with us.
None of, I would say under three years, because this, this is about a three-year process. And I would say that the last two years are a little bit of an outlier. You know, we've had kids with, with, who were quarantined, who were in and out of school, some virtual, some face-to-face. Kids need to be in the classroom with the teacher, that's how they learn best. The, the longer I can keep them face-to-face with the teacher, the better I feel about it. We do have kids who are very successful in the virtual environment and those kids are in our virtual academy. Everybody else need, needs to be in, in with our teachers. I think what you'll see as students remain and we keep students face-to-face, you'll begin to see that growth. I don't think there's any denying the effect that the COVID slide has taken. It will be with us for a while, that it's not an easy fix. It is, it is something that we will continue to struggle with over time. But as each student remains in the building with our teachers and with our interventions and with our, our coaches. I think you'll begin to see exactly what you're talking about, a progression of growth upwards. But, you know, unfortunately, we were dealt a bad hand, not, not Kershaw County, but everybody. And we're, so we're, we're addressing that the best way we can.
Right, and folks down in Kershaw County, dollars that have, you know, been funded down. Is there anything that you show us what have taken place with the after-school programs and these?
Yes, sir, y'all.
Because I mean, it'd be good to know that this is what we were in the midst of a pandemic. And then we've been talking into after-school program and this is the results of it, we haven't seen.
Right, well, you have, you have, and you have access to that, that spreadsheet.
Which one is that?
Well, I, I sent it to you earlier, it's called the Esser tutoring spreadsheet, it's a Google doc, that, a Google form that I, that I shared with you. I shared the whole board. Most of the tutoring data that you'll get is dependent on their spring math scores, which take place right as we get back from spring break. The last tutoring finished March the first, March the thirty-first, that was the last of the tutoring protocol. So once that was done, the, the, the way they defined their program was using their spring map data. So once their spring map that is completed, we will load that into the spreadsheet as well. You should all have access to that data, if you don't.
How about coming on the, the teacher retention? One good thing that I think the, they look at this data and most of the teachers that we're losing was across the state, just not Kershaw County, it was in that first year to fifth year. And we just started a program, the TIP program in South Carolina. And it just brought, came to my mind, Dr. Mona Jethan told us just the other day that everybody was in that program, those first two teachers, every single one of them was coming back. So that may be something down the road that really increases that.
But again, if you don't have access to that, when y'all go into executive session, I'll send that to you at that point. But I thought I sent that to you in February. After the winter board retreat. The next slide. The Elliott observation tools, which we refer to, that's a cognit, device that we use for our advanced ed certification. It engages student engagement in the classroom, it's, it's not all about what the teachers are doing, it's what the kids are doing. The goal that the district chose was the digital learning and you can see that although it is one of our lower ones, we do see significant or progressive growth. Through that process, which you would expect in Kershaw County with what we've done with technology, Dr. Sang and his staff. Works very hard to engage our teachers, to train them well. But when you go in to do an observation, sometimes technology isn't what they're doing. If you're in a science class, you might be doing a lab, if you're in an English class, you might be writing a paper. In a math class, you might be doing some direct construction, which may not involve technology at that point. So if you do and you walk in and you see that the way the, the tool works, you get a zero. There's no way to, to just check and say that's not applicable at this point. So a teacher gets sort of angry when they get a zero on anything and so that lowers the scores a little bit. But you do see growth in this, within the bounds of what our goal is. The next. Go ahead.
I just got the two that just speaking of, I kind of like missed that. I'm just trying to. What your questions are? Now, I was wondering, you, you're talking about the data and whether it's if you walk into a classroom and this is going on, then the digital is not.
Yeah, it's an app that, it's an app that you use. And so the principal, the assistant principal walk in the classroom and they're observing, Dr. Robbins is teaching a class and will gauge the equitable learning that has been going on in the classroom. Is it a well-managed classroom? And the rubric you use is zero to four. Well, if you don't see something, the score is a zero. So mathematically, that's going to skew the average, even if it's a great lesson and he's doing wonderful things. If he does not, if the assistant principal doesn't see technology, then he puts a zero. Whether or not it's a good lesson or not, so that skews the average over time. If you add zeros in, that's, that's going to alter how it is, there should be a way to check that out, that that just wasn't applicable in that, in that lesson. There are times it is, times it is, it's a tool in our toolbox, it's not the only tool, it's a big tool, it's not the only tool that we expect teachers to use. The next is a survey that we give to all of the administrators, school administrators and district office administrators. They complete the survey anonymously and then we compile the data. The four that the district chose in their strategic plan was number one, which was teacher, district leaders make decisions based on identified goals. And you can see that's the first column and you can see that it, it goes up progressively to one of our highest scores. The next one is people are recognized and rewarded. Not so much, it's sort of flat, again, that is from our district and school level administrative staff. Just so you know what each column is, the third column is senior leaders exemplify expectations. And well, well done in that category. Number four is senior leaders are viewed as colleagues. Number five, leaders accept responsibility. Number six was one of the goals that was chosen, leaders support innovation. And you can see that that's one of our highest-rated categories. Number seven is communication is open. Number eight, there's clarity of roles, and although that was not one of the identified goals, that's obviously one we need to work on. Because uh clearly uh the perception is there's some lowness of roles. And number nine is support is adequate, and people feel like we, the district office does a good job of supporting people. Number ten, processes are clearly defined. Again, that's something that along with clarity of roles, I think one leads to the other. Uh so we need to do a better process, do a better job of defining the processes. And the the final one that the district chose as a uh goal was teamwork is encouraged. And indeed, we do encourage teamwork, and you see that across uh the schools. And our final slide i- involves the Continuous Learning Center. And the goal was to reduce the population of the Continuous Learning Center uh by ten percent. And you can see that Mr. Falkenberry, uh who started in twenty eighteen to now, has reduced it by twenty-one students, which is about twenty-five percent, uh which is a remarkable job. Uh Mr. Falkenberry and his staff, uh they have really taken that uh bull by the horns and turned it into a program that we can all be very proud of. Students really feel like that's a place where they can grow, uh to borrow his expression, uh and uh turn their lives around, uh because they weren't being successful in the traditional classroom environment. And the traditional classroom environment isn't for everybody. That doesn't mean there's not a place. So Mr. Falkenberry has turned the Continuous Learning Center into that place. That is our final slide. Are there any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome, and I'll get that information to you before you leave.
So I'm mostly going to take a second to discuss resignation in town at certain best part of the former certified best part of the the same attempt is in transfer of certified best part of the that. I would motion that is the right second button, but I also feel that non-basement, those are the
Second.
Probably most of the second all the different normal center. In the executive session we discuss resignation, retirement, certified passport, employment, certified passport personnel, for simultaneously transfers certified passports personnel. Is there mostly acceptance administration recommendation showing? Probably most by first like the second.
Sir.
Mr. Sir almost as well let you know by saying I those policies to now is is there most in the journey closer prior.
Second.
Probably most by Mr. Irish second by Mr. Wang almost as well that number reason that thing. And that's about us. So.
Father, thank you for by us this evening. We leave you this evening never from your divine presence. We ask that you lead us safely back home and find always well. And we hope we find peace when we get at home. All these blessings in our holy and precious name we count it up. Amen.
Amen.